File to order the January 30th, you may impress the commission. Please stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And then you said, let's record shit at all three commissioners present. Mr. Stone, Mr. Thomas, Mr. Smith. And do we have anybody from the public? It's not everybody else. All right, so. And at this time, time to down to review of the bills.
At this time, I'm going to pay the bills that have been properly presented and.
Second.
Question four, second to. Page said bill, Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Commissioner Stone.
Yes.
Yes. Nothing from the assessor this morning.
No.
Our appointment schedules. I bring this to the first appointment. That would be with Mr. Thomas Seater Shell. So I guess somebody's taking place. Would that be you, Mr. Wrong?
Yes.
You in group of.
Yourself. Personally.
That is fine.
Um, we have two requests for you. Updates on projects with it each come with a request.
All right.
So it's one that you can.
Okay, thank you.
And the second.
So. Three copies.
Oh, like two hundred of this.
Should be four, I think.
Yeah. Yay. Oops, sorry. Share, share one. The boo. All right.
So the first request, um, and update is with regard to the West Virginia Northern Rail Trail. As you know, we've had a couple of miles completed now for a couple of years. Um, at the end, as you all know, there was a washout not long after we got it completed during the big storm. So what we were unaware of at that time, at the end of the trail, is that there was some residual funding that because of where they stopped, they wanted to stop at Snyder's Crossing. Which made it a good safe ending point. There was funding left in that grant.
Okay.
Uh, since our fund associates was managing the funding at that point, we didn't really understand where that residual money was going to go or if if we would, if it would go back into the to the coffers or if we would get it. So Preston County Parks Recreation is, um, allowed to continue to use that funding. But we are very, it's very specific in how we can use it. It can only be used for materials. Uh, and it can only be used for materials towards the trail. So, uh, we have been working to try to find, and the other stipulation is that those materials have to be made in the USA 100% down to the steel, um, because of the timeline. Uh, so a lot of the avenues we've tried to pursue have not worked. We're looking at trail materials such as stop, con, stone, uh, journey barriers.
For along the road.
Correct. With that, though, we see an opportunity. If we do not use the funding to buy materials, we will lose the funding.
Right. Um, this is, where did this funding come from?
This is through the federal highway program.
Okay.
Um, so it's federal funding, um, that's managed through the state for the transportation alternatives.
Right.
So we have approximately $64,000 that we can spend towards materials.
Okay.
Uh, what we would like to do is leverage some of that funding towards the repair of the end of the trail, uh, where the washout was. We've had Brownsville Excavating, um, provide us an estimate to do to afford for that specific repair, um, for materials that were prepaid for by the grant and then what the labor cost would be for that, which came to, uh, $9,900 for the. We are requesting to the commission, if you would be willing to, to, uh, provide funding for the labor to repair the end of the trail.
And how much of the labor is that for Southern or?
That's the nine, the nine thousand.
Oh, that is done now. Okay. All right, I just want to make sure I understand. I saw the nine thousand, but I didn't know that was just the materials because it has all of it all together.
Yes, it does. The breakout is the, um, the nine hundred nine, or nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Is this the only quote you guys have received thus far?
Yes, it is.
I know exactly where you're talking about because I I run down to the end all the time. You could literally get lost in the hole.
Yes.
Too far.
And it's continuing to get worse as time's on high. We have, we have reached out to the Department of Highways and the adjacent property owners to try and work again to make repairs there, um, to nettle a bail.
Yeah, I know. There's a DOH issue right there at one point in time. They're designing where all that first happened.
Yeah, there's a creek on the one side and then the ditch.
Correct.
Kind of just runs into the trail.
That's correct.
You guys kind of put a culvert?
Well, the culvert actually is on adjacent property owner that goes to the old concrete plant. They have been unwilling to make a repair there. Um, and then the rest of it is on the, on the Snyder's Crossing right away, actually on the trail.
Right.
Um, and then the creek, then when it floods, the culvert gets blocked, backs up. And so it it comes out of the creek bed above the trail across the road and comes down across Snyder's Crossing and then the trail happens to be below point. So the repair that Brownsville has, has planned for is to actually repair where it is, where it is washed out, but also go across and build up along the stream bed to hope it prevents it from washing down in the future.
Yeah, so it doesn't act like a fire hose effect. It spreads it out, spreads the water out, so dissipates.
Correct.
Dissipates right away instead of just trying to.
And also try to cut additional swales to to redirect it. But it should become even greater than the last storm that we're planning for.
Right. I don't, I don't have a problem. We just have to figure out where we have to put the money from.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any issue. One, one thing I would like is, and I know you guys aren't required to do this, that have to check maybe some other companies just to get comparisons on pricing, just to make sure we're getting, um, the best price. Just because it is taxpayer money and maybe to, um.
And I tell you, the stone prices don't be what it is because there's. Like you can stone and they're all pretty much the same. So it's crazy going down the left, the labor part of it. So if you don't like doing that, we'll look for the money while you're doing that. See if we can't make it happen. Probably have to see if we have to see if we can get, see how much it's going to. Or in, um, hotel motel.
No, no, sure.
And, uh, and see if we can't do something like that.
Maybe there's a chance that would be like just two.
One or two.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Not saying you guys didn't do your due diligence. And this probably is maybe the lowest one. It's just when it comes to taxpayer money.
It's always good to have, it's always good to have a couple of it.
Yeah.
Unless you want to, you're doing stuff that's under like the thousand, the five thousand dollar thing. They still like, you know, it's like three quotes a lot of times just to do it.
That's usually what the commission does. So even though we're giving you the funding, it's so nice to have that way. If taxpayers ask, you know, about it, we can show that.
Absolutely. We will do that. Did, did, uh, Brownsville ladies get a timeline for you? Is this something that you need to get to immediately or is this? I mean, I was looking at that also as liability, if, you know, if that continues to wash out. That's a more liability, um, for the trail system. Someone ran down through there and got injured. Yeah, that's what it's. It hasn't been on a so.
Yeah.
That's what I mean. He did not give us a specific timeline, however, I didn't ask him for the timeline. We were.
Because if he couldn't get to it in the immediate, because that is something that I think would need addressed immediately or it needs to be sectioned off, so that's part of the track. I'd ask him that.
That'd be good to see what timeline. Yeah, when you go after the others, ask them what, you know, what timeline they got.
And then, uh.
I mean, I know weather's an issue and they can't do it when it's, you know, icy cold, it's mucky. And and you can't push mud, I'm sorry. It doesn't work. You gotta have dry weather to do it. Mud doesn't work. So right now would not be a good day to do it. Without the sunshine.
Just one thing, looking at the quote, $2,000 for delivery. Let me look around. I think there may be a possibility that we could get free delivery.
Well, the delivery in this case, frankly, would be included in the, the.
The cost of it, yeah. That's really how I got, last time I got, last time I ordered a stone.
Great pleasure.
Cause we got standing on it for solid story when they were fixing the, um, the tire, the, the slope for the tire and stuff up it, tear all of it, put it in the bag, I mean, like a little corona. I got to say it was stone. But buried, concreted down, built with stone. And that's about what was.
Okay.
And it's been, it's been washed out for pretty much ever since the trail opened.
Yeah, it happened.
Washed right.
Yeah.
A couple of months after.
Yeah.
We'll definitely work on that. Um, the second request.
The second request, uh, comes back to the weather. It's also an update on the, um, the Tunnelton play report. Um, the contractor is moving along, however, a couple of the play pieces have been backordered. The fencing is the backward. One of the last play pieces to come in is to be delivered in February. I don't have a date on the fencing.
Okay.
Um, but we're requesting a.
An extension.
An extension to, um, March.
Thirty first.
Yes, thank you.
Is there any reason to suspect that it would get pushed past March 31st? And the reason we asked this.
I know we requested a few times.
Just say, why don't we just say May 31st or something like that?
Maybe that would be.
I mean, and just to be on the safe side, I know we're, we're fine with, we're fine.
Can we do that? To give us some vision.
Yeah, I need a different letter and you could just have.
We should, can I wish I was in that?
But I have, I'd probably re-present that. Just to be safe. So just present it because we can present it next week or our next meeting. And you don't, I, I'm happy to include that in my.
Okay.
And I agree in that regard and there's no reason, because, you know, just in case.
Okay. I'm sure Rochelle is trying to.
Give it two months and be done with it.
To keep it.
Cause the main thing with this funding, this was stuff that came through art. As long as it's, you've got it allocated, it just has to be spent by 20.6.
Okay.
Done that.
The contractor is working, he's moving along the wall that's finished, if, or nearly finished, if not finished.
Right. Ideally, they wanted it spent in 20.4, but I don't think that would be an issue whatsoever. So I think, yeah, we disagree just. May, May of 24.
Okay.
Then we know we're safe and you guys don't have to keep, you know, you don't have to come back and go, oh. And I just got another delay because of something. I just give a letter and then I'll just present that.
Okay, I'll let it know.
And then that's all I need.
Okay.
We're good to go.
I'll let it know. Very good. Uh, and we'll get at least one.
Yeah.
Too much.
Very great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, cause sometimes even they, you run into situations like, I want three bids. Well, sometimes you can't get anybody bidding something. Cause we're too busy and the delivery's still on.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Bring this down to our next one a little behind. Raleigh Bailey, the EDA, request to release the 20.4 funds.
Morning, guys.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to request that you release the 20.4 funds that were allocated to us in the budget in the amount of $3,000. And just wanted to give you a really quick update on some of the stuff we've been working on as part of the delivery request. So as you know, broadband is coming to move well in Preston County. The North Preston Broadband Project was completed, uh, at the end of last year, mid end of last year. Uh, we constructed 101 miles of broadband with the USDA grant or USDA grant, the Economic Development Authority got, uh, in partnership with Prodigy. And we were able to bring broadband to, we went past about thirteen, between 1300 and 1400 houses. And the last number I had from 10 was close to 900 people that signed up so far. So, um, you know, that, that's a, that's better than we projected in the grant documents. So very happy, um, we should.
On 118 miles?
Hundred and ninety one point one. Um, we have a meeting with USDA later this week to try to get that project closed out. And we've been up at the old King's Shoe Plant, also, you know, just the Grace Chapel Building. We've been doing a lot of work up there with the AML pilot grant. Uh, we have put a new roof on the building, replaced the lighting, had the building remediated and entered it into the voluntary remediation program. Put in a new security system, put in new HBAC, HBAC, which is going on today. Uh, new hot water heaters, replaced the parking lot, built a six taker pad with a new road. Probably the best road in Preston County is up at Grace Chapel right now because it doesn't have any traffic. Uh, we have used several local contractors on the project. We've used Solid Rock, um, Excavating, GPC, and RAA contracting. So we tried to get local contractors through the bid process, you know, had to go through the bid process. But we have been able to get some local contractors to work on that. Um, that was a $2.2 million grant. Uh, we've been able to leverage some additional money, so we're up to $2.6 million on that project. Uh, our website, new website we put in place, uh, just about a year ago has a lot of information on Preston County, features each municipality, talks about why do people live in Preston County, demographics, site information, uh, job listings, calendar events. Since we put the website in place, our users have tripled, which is great. That's what we wanted to see. Um, we are seeing people from several different countries and states accessing the website, including India, Germany, and Ireland are three of our top countries. Um, New York, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and North Carolina are just top states looking at the website in addition to West Virginia, which we would expect. Uh, so that's been a great thing up in Preston County. We've seen a lot of use from Preston County people on that website, especially the, um, calendar events. Our top pages people jump on are calendar events, the homepage, and Preston County history, which is interesting. We don't know why that's one of their top pages. We're trying to figure that out. The other thing we've done with the website is we spent some time on search engine optimization. When we first launched the website, we were coming up about 16th on Google. So we spent about half a year working on trying to get that up. We're now at the number six, which is probably where we're going to land because we're not going to pass the county commission, Preston County Schools, Preston Memorial Hospital. So, so we're, you know, we're comfortable that we've done what we needed to do there to get more, um, access and visibility for our website. Facebook, you all may have seen, we've been trying to launch a program to promote Preston County businesses. We feature different Preston County businesses every day. Um, for us to feature business that have to either Facebook page or a website so that we can pull information from them. We don't have time to reach out to every business and ask them to give us information. So we're pulling it from sources that already exist. And that has, um, really increased our Facebook usership. We had, um, just shy of 29,000 post queues last month, in the last month. So definitely increasing that rate on, on Facebook. I talked to you a little while ago about the build West Virginia program and we, we were going to submit an application in Mon County that has gone in. It is, uh, has to be accrued by the Secretaries of Commerce, Tourism, and Economic Development. So we anticipate it probably will take at least 30 to 60 days to get through all the secretaries and get their approval.
That's a little change.
Yeah, but it is, it has been submitted and it is, um, sitting there. And as a reminder, that provides tax incentives for developers to build workforce housing in Preston County. And we were able to, when we did our 20 mile circle, we were able to include every municipality in Preston County. Most of municipalities in Mon County, I don't think we got as far as Blacksville. We were also able to include Craft in there. So, uh, hub zone status, we did receive the government recommended hub zone status for Preston County and that gives, uh, businesses in Preston County referential treatment to governor, government contracts. Strategic plan, we had that team through come in and do a new strategic plan for us. And one of what we're doing is based on the information, uh, from the strategic plan. West Virginia just launched the hashtag, yes, West Virginia ready sites program. And that is to help get more sites in West Virginia ready for business relocation. They hired a site selection consultant to work with every economic development authority in the state that chooses to participate. We were able to submit two sites that had to be over 10 vocal acres, which had to go through a RFP process. We had to provide, you know, a couple pages with, uh, information. Our sites cleared the first hurdle and now we're moving forward. They're going to come in and do basically a gap analysis on the states around the sites to say, these are the things that these sites need to be attractive for development. And, um, the sites in the state that end up being best sites, I think are going to go on as a special website that the state level to really work on business attraction. So those are moving forward. That's just been within the last month that they've been really kicking that off. Um, ARC Power Planning Grant, we partnered with Fairmont State, Glendale State, EDA, submitted ARC uh, plan, power planning grant. Um, we held a series of business roundtables where we talked to businesses to see what kind of gaps there are in the workforce that need to be filled to get them to hire people quicker. Um, had four roundtables and all of them were attended well. Our next step is this weekend, we're having a two day workshop to put together all the data that we've received from the roundtables and develop a plan or a full implementation grant. So what can we do with our partnership to impact the workforce moving forward? I don't know how that's gonna, what it's gonna look like because we have some really great ideas, so. Once I know where to look from, I will certainly let you know. Infrastructure, um, with the various, uh, federal financial plans that have come out. We are working on infrastructure throughout Preston County waters. We're, right now, there are, uh, I've got between 13 and 15 projects running. Um, and the projects I've got total just about $70 million. So that's a great investment in infrastructure in Preston County. Uh, Tunnelton Sewer and Bruston Sewer are just wrapping up and we've got Carroll Water is bidding right now. Uh, Bruston Phase Two will bid in a couple of months probably and Mason County Sewer is going to do it in a couple of months. So all of them are moving forward.
What do we call ARPA projects, correct or?
Most of them have some ARPA and we've been working really hard to get those ARPA funds spent down, uh, quickly and get all the reporting in, working with Nate to make sure that everything's good.
It's good.
Uh, finally, the, the other one is we did, well, we did lease the Grace Chapel Building to secure their fibers about a month ago, so they're now moving, they're in and, um, shipping, having people up there just about every day. So that allowed us to get their operations completed in Preston County. And then finally, uh, Lock Chain Power, we're leasing lots to the industrial park to them. And they have invested, uh, just over one and a quarter million dollars for Preston County businesses in the time that they've been out there. They've got six employees and their employees are making between 55 and 80,000 dollars a year with benefits.
And that's the Bitcoin mining.
That is Bitcoin, yeah. And they've got six more, uh, employees that help them. So twelve employees in Preston County at this time.
Yeah, when you sent that out, that was new to me. I, um, you know, I live out that way and I didn't know.
Well, you didn't know that.
Yeah, that they put that facility.
And it's been there.
About a year. It's been over a year.
And the other ones in, on Laurel Mountain.
It is Denver.
Denver, it's Denver, yeah.
Yeah, it's right on Route 46.
Yeah. Which makes sense because that's, that is, that would be our substation was there. They own mine, so it just makes sense to put it there.
Yeah.
So that's all I've got. Last name, if you have any questions.
Um, how's everything with Bionic Tire going in Valley?
We had a call with, uh, WV EDA yesterday, which Samantha helped get set up with Chris Warner. I think everything is moving better now. There are some things they need to get submitted to the state by the first of the month. And that will complete their capital stack to make the project. Finally, being able to move forward with the project. Yeah, I mean, I'm sure if you've been out there, you've seen that they're already, you know, they're just like prepared and they've got.
He was just waiting for his billing to come in because it was on, it is like a six monthly.
Yeah, it's supposed to be here in March.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, February, March.
Yeah, so, um, I had a couple texts with him this morning, just kind of, hey, you know, let me know if there's anything we can do for you. Once we get the EDA approval, I'll be back to visit you to ask for a resolution for an industrial access road for their project. Have to get that last piece of funding in place before we can do that. But that's going to be the next step, is to come back and request that.
Oh, seriously.
To, uh, start that process moving forward.
That would be great. We need to live and work in Preston County.
Yeah, and I think they're, they're trying to be very responsible about everything that they do and I think they have some really good plans for the workforce in Preston County.
They do, and, and, you know, he's, they're trying really hard to, that was the fight they had with the PSC anyway because they were trying to limit how much profit they could make, which would have put them, you couldn't have paid them, looked up a real good wage if you wanted to pay a good wage with benefits. And they were putting the neighbor on how profit they could make and it was like, why?
Like because they do that with utilities, however.
But it's, you know.
Different, it's not utilities.
It's not utility. I was like, that was my point. I was like, this is not a utility. Why are you trying to treat it like a utility? This is a service. And, but.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Um, no, I'll be, um, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do you have paperwork for the, the, the request or we just?
Send it by.
Okay.
Yeah. All right, brings us down to our assessor.
Good morning. I'm bringing names before you that you want to know about. Joshua Wall is, um.
I knew that person.
Correct, you know him very well. He comes to us with an MS in education, which we, um, it's a lot of what we did. We, we, uh, with the, with the requirements of our, and what our, our in, is, um, our, our findings are. Um, so I respectfully submit his name to be considered for employment. Upon approval, Joshua will be in work on the road first, 2024, and he's paid from the General County Fund. He will be paid at a salary rate of $34,000 with benefits contingent upon a three month probationary period. It will become permanent on April 22nd, 2024. Any other questions?
Um, now, we, they all certainly, Ned Ossen.
I have moved to, uh, approve the hire of Joshua Wall for, um, employment in the assessor's office to begin February 1st, 2024 from the General County Fund at a salary rate of $34,000 per year. Sorry, that was, um.
Thirty.
That'd be the assessor's salary.
It should be assessor's value.
Yes. I apologize.
And that should be from the assessor's valuation fund. Oh, salary is correct? Yes, at rate of $34,000 per year with benefit contingent upon a three month probationary period and to become permanent on April 22nd, 2024.
contingent upon a three-month probationary period, and to become permanent on April 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Wanting to sign that higher, Mr. Wall? Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
I also wanted to present another name. As you well know, Doris has not been able to do her extra help for us this year, and we felt that deeply. I have another name who is willing to come in and do some part-time work for us under extra help.
Okay.
And that name is Kelly Reed.
So Austin, you tricked me, I'm like, he's here for Preston County Parks and Recreation. And then. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of.
And this, at this time, I may be approved the minutes for January 9th, 2024.
Second question?
Second, approve the minutes. Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes. State settlements?
At this time, I may be approved the state settlement list for January 16th, 2024, for January 17th, 2024, for Craig, Louis, Seifol, and Turner.
Okay.
Second, approve the state settlements, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
I move to dispense with the reading, with the proceedings and vacation, and enter them into record in open court session for January 18th, 2024, through January 24th, 2024.
Second.
Commissioner, want to say it too? Settlement, we're seeing some mediation, Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Do share your mission this week, minimal business, brings down a new business, and this was discussed last week, this has got attention later with the Paul and Fowler, Blamming and Brown and Poe. So if there's any, any more discussion needed on this document?
Really just an update of the fee, the service remaining to same, and also update with our current president, deciding president. So I move to approve the retention letter between the Preston County Commission and Paul and Fowler, Blamming, and Brown and Poe.
Wanting to second to approve this potential letter on our business, Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. Central Broad, brings down our county minister's report, Mr. Reddick.
Morning, everyone. Happy last meeting in January. The first part of my report is all about forthcoming meetings. Before we get to the first item on the agenda, let me just remind everyone that our meeting next week will be on Wednesday, February 7th, starting at 9:00 a.m. Now, let's turn our attention to the first item on the agenda. The meeting scheduled for the Board of Equalization and Review, which is as follows. The first meeting is on Thursday, February 1st, at 10:00 a.m. Second meeting is on Wednesday, February 7th, at 10:00 a.m. This is our state of West Virginia minerals. Our third meeting is on Tuesday, February 13th, at 10:00 a.m. And our final meeting is on Friday, February 16th, at 5:00 p.m. in the evening. All the meetings are here at the meeting room and will require appointments if members of the public wish to be heard. Our next scheduled item concerns the upcoming budget session for budget year 24, 25. While commissioners receive a more in-depth timeline via email from me on Friday, the major highlights, which have all been sent to other department heads and elected officials as of this morning, includes the following. Worksheets will be distributed to office holders no later than the 20th of February, and they will be due back from office holders to the bookkeeper no later than the 29th of February. Open budget meetings with elected officials will then run from all day on Monday, March 18th. In the afternoon then, post-meeting on Tuesday, March 19th, and if needed, all day on Wednesday, March 20th. Hopefully, we will not need March 20th, but we have it scheduled just in case. Then, the budget will be temporarily approved at the commission meeting, on Tuesday, March 26th, and it must be on its way to the auditorium's office in Charleston by the deadline on Thursday, March 28th. That leads us to the final item on the list of upcoming meetings, the opioid settlement work session, which will be held right here at 11:30 a.m. on Thursday, February 1st, after the Board of Equalization meeting. We received some good information from the recent County Commissioners Association Conference, and will be looking forward to discussing this information, as well as listening to the community's feedback on the opioid issue here in Preston County at this work session. We highly encourage all who can to attend. This takes us to a discussion of our revised travel policy. There has been some discussion regarding the procedure and cost for the newly adopted conference and training travel policy. And so what you all have before you is a somewhat abbreviated form, true to the spirit of that policy, but just slightly amended. And I would pause at this point in time for any discussion from the commissioners, because I have some concrete examples of what costs might look like between the two scenarios, if you want me to put on my professor gear and do my lecture voice. Again, I'd be more than happy to do that, to help illustrate things, because when you talk about cost, it's difficult to do that in a vacuum. Is that something you'd like me to proceed with?
Boy, if I could just have one minute to speak. Don, we certainly appreciate all the work you did on the original policy. I think we may have jumped the gun, or I may have jumped the gun on it a little bit, because once we got into actually working through some reimbursements, there was questions from employees, elected officials, so on, and some monetary concerns and other concerns along with that. So Nate, me and Nate were brainstorming last week, and this is our recommendation to the commission. So if you want to proceed on your breakdown, Nate?
Sure, so let me give this as using our last conference in Charleston as the functional example. Since registration, lodging, and mileage rates will not vary in this comparison, we shall simply zero those out. The current policy allows for $48 for the first and last day of travel, which is 75% of the total daily allowance of $64, based on the G S A for the zip code in Charleston where we attended the conference. If I want to be overly pedantic here, I could question whether or not that is per day or the total of the two days combined. So let's just run both numbers for the sake of the example and to fulfill the argument. So it's either $48 or $96. Plus the $5 a day for incidentals brings a total of M I and E, M and I P of this trip to either $53 or $106 per person, or $212, or $424 in total for our party respectively, since all four of us went. Now, under the revised version of this policy we all have before you now, excluding, again, registration, lodging, and mileage, just as we did for the previous example, the additional cost of the county, at least for me, would be $0. Why? Because I didn't leave until 6:00 p.m. on the way down on Saturday, so dinner wasn't missed. And I returned to the office by 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, after having consumed an obscene amount of nachos and Diet Coke provided to me by the conference. That wasn't information that necessarily pertinent, but we had a lot of good food, and I love to highlight it there. No incidental or travel funds for the sake of travel are included here. And so that gives a sort of a cost breakdown of what the differences would be in terms of what we're looking at before you now. And for those of you who aren't looking at what we have here, we have sent that to our attorney, which we just did, did the other retention letter for. When he agreed to review, she made some comments initially, and then what you're looking at now is the revised version based on our comments that we're waiting for final approval from her. So that's sort of an example of what we're looking at in terms of cost difference, which I was asked to produce, so.
Thank you, Nate, that was, that was very good. So, I mean, the proposed new policy, the mileage is the same. We would follow the IRS standard mileage rate, which is 67 point, or is it 67 cents right now, amount? And then the actual reimbursement is kind of simplified for the elected official employees' sake. So breakfast, if you, if breakfast was not provided by your hotel, your venue, or the registration fee, the venture down to training conference, you would get $15 for breakfast, $20 for lunch, $25 for dinner. So that's how it's broke down, them numbers wouldn't change, so it would be very simple. So, in a day, if no mills were provided, that's what you would get, you would get 60, you know, $6 altogether. And then all lodging would be paid by the D card, and it's simple as that. And then Nate, being as intelligent as he is, created an Excel sheet where you punch in the mills that were.
Yeah, I have an example of that, if you want to see sort of, and it's not an intelligent Excel, but you get it.
It's simple, but it works.
I can use it, so, and Excel is like the least quality, like, I shouldn't be allowed to use Excel, to be honest, but I can. And so that's a, that's a good one.
You enter a mill provided, and then.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a number thing, and it auto calculates, and everything is set up to auto calculate all of the costs.
Very, very, very simple.
Now, a point, a point of possible objection here would be, these would need to be revisited. So this would push the button down.
That was my, yeah, that was my point, because what we've done then by setting these numbers, Mr. Stone, is we're basically saying $60, no matter where the hell we go in the United States.
Right.
And also, 10 years from now, another commission, or even five years from now, depending on the way inflation goes, another commission is going to have to revisit this and change everything.
The counter to that sort of thing could be something as the following. One, you probably should be reviewing your handbook every three years anyway. Well, I would agree, so, given that it would have to do, this would be a comprehensive review anyway of the entirety of things, that would be one more piece that you would review. The second thing has to do with our actual travel. We don't actually travel that much.
Out of state.
And particularly out of state.
Right.
The vast majority of travel is done in Charleston, which is, the numbers here that have been drafted are very comparable to exactly what you would get.
Well, based off the Charleston zip code that we went.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, I'm just saying, this really does, this is something previous commission had not done, revising it, whatever, and this is stuff we have here, we have to fix. Yep. And I do not want it to languish in us not go back and look at it again, or the next, whatever commission comes up next in three years, not do this. Because all it's going to do is just continue to get us behind the curve.
Correct, and that's how you get a mileage rate of like 40 cents a mile.
I think it's a very simple update, I mean, our mileage does follow.
And then that was, that was the biggest thing that I had to, that it was, you had a separate rate in there, and you can't do that. It will change, it changed, I've seen it change in the middle of the year.
Yeah, we're done.
No, but yeah, we can.
And it, and it's changes have been historically significant, and you can look, the link that's included on there, because it's hyperlinked in text, that you'll be able to see, will take you directly to the site, and you'll be able to see all the way back to 2011. Yeah.
That you just say, I like the idea, and I'm sure it works a lot better with the federal government, because they don't take out mills that were provided, correct?
Well, not just, it's not just federal government, a lot of state governments use this, a lot of county governments use it, and also a lot of private industries use it, because of the simplicity of the management.
Yes.
Because they don't have to keep going back and revisit numbers, because depending on where you're going, that's where it's gonna be.
It just really makes sense, I did a lot of research, calling surrounding counties and talking to a lot of other counties across the state, and there are many that use the G S A. However.
It's different.
However, they take the G S A and amend it to fit their working budget. And our working budget does not lend to being able to reimburse and not accounting for every single penny and making sure we're not giving a lot more than what it actually costs to travel.
Yes, so what a lot of the counties did with the G S A, you could just look the G S A up, so you could get 75% of your two travel days, your first and last day, and then whatever the G S A was for the remainder, and they didn't take out for any mills provided. So they were just paying that G S A no matter what. That's what, whatever neighboring counties is doing, and that's just too, that's financially too much, and I wouldn't want to overcompensate an employee for their travel. I mean, the way you had it, Don, wouldn't, but it just makes it a lot more complicated. There's a lot of factors to follow.
Well, this I will understand, I should refund.
Okay, at this time, I move to approve the new travel policy for training and conferences, as was presented by our county minister.
Second.
I want to motion forward, saying approve this revision to the travel policy, Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Stone?
Yes.
Yes.
Back to the day, my apologies, back to the day.
That, that takes us to our facilities report, where I will begin with the sheriff's update, and everyone keep your fingers crossed for it. The sheriff's update is the handrails are up, they're paying the steps to the basement as we speak, covers on basement, open, over open electrical boxes is proceeding, they're doing touch-up and cleaning, with a walk-through to develop the final punch list coming sometime soon. And we'll have Kevin running this show, now, for our prodigal son, Edison. Here is the word straight from Amber's mouth, everyone keep your fingers crossed for it. Material should be here on site on Friday, February 2nd, with installation starting Monday, with a target completion date of Friday to 9:00. Please let us all pray for that. That brings us to the courthouse reconfiguration plan, which is now heading to the next phase, the bidding process. To that effect, you have before you the last item in my report, as I have no miscellaneous correspondence or budget revisions. And that is the proposal from the Mills Group for additional support in our courthouse reconfiguration project, the design of which has been conceptualized by the Mills Group itself. I apologize for the length of what I'm about to read here, but with a price tag of $55,000, I want to provide detail here as to what the Mills Group is providing for this phase of the project. A project, I will remind everyone, was foisted upon the commission as an unfunded mandate by the West Virginia State Legislature. For those who are ultimately concerned about costs here, please take that up with our friends in Charleston, because again, this was handed to us as an unfunded mandate from the West Virginia State Legislature.
If I could interrupt you, then there's Supreme Court regulations, there is West Virginia Code, and E D A compliances that we have to follow. Some things may seem simpler when you're looking at it from a simple standpoint, but when you actually try to go do it, that's not allowed, right?
Correct, correct, Commissioner Thomas is correct. Let's begin. The Mills Group will develop a set of bidding documents for construction, and they will coordinate mechanical, electrical, plumbing consultants in construction documents and specifications for design. It is assumed that three coordinated meetings between the Mills Group and the commission will be needed during the development of construction drawings. These drawings shall be submitted to the city of Kingwood and the state fire marshal for permitting and review. After completion of the set of bidding documents for constructions, the Mills Group will establish and administer the bidding process, issuing the agenda, evaluating proposed substitutions. In addition, they will review bidder qualification, analyze bids, and assist the commission in the selection of subcontractors. Once the project begins, the Mills Group will assist in the facilitation of project communication, maintaining project records, reviewing and certifying amounts due contractors, and preparing change orders. It is assumed that this is a three-month construction period with three construction meetings planned. And so with that, small summation of the document you have before you, I humbly request that the commission make a motion to approve this proposal from the Mills Group, authorizing the president to sign, for a price tag of $55,000, a month sum that is billed monthly, as you can see from the details of the contract. That is it.
Just one, one comment before we move forward with action. This may seem like a large amount for a group to police a project, but it's my opinion that this will help cut down in cost in the long run because of good expert administration. So I think, I think we're come out neutral in the end. So I think, I think we're come out neutral in the end. Okay, well, at this time, I move to approve this contract with the Mills Group to handle the courthouse reconfiguration on the second floor for the price tag of $55,000. And authorize the president and the president and the commission to sign. Sorry, Don.
Oh, second one?
Motion for a motion to approve this contract, and authorize the president to sign with the Mills Group, the reconstruction project.
I would just like to say one thing about this. This is going to start where we can actually get physical bids for this project, because we have no, there's just some estimates. The newspaper had said $500,000, there's been people saying $600,000, but in totality, that's not really where we're at, and I think everyone needs to, we need to see what the bids are going to look like on this project before we really start saying things like that, because I don't know, but just my opinion of looking over there is that, you know, you're not, and I've talked to some professional people concerning it, but when you're not messing with exterior load-bearing walls, when you're not moving a lot of plumbing, that doesn't really, your price isn't going to be as much when you're just reconfiguring the inside of something and you're not messing with this critical infrastructure. You know, one thing that's going to cost a lot, which we have to do, is the staff groups have to be ADA compliant. There's a lot of things that we have to get up to where it needs to be. So with that, I just wanted to, you know, there are some, there's some things, we just don't know until it's actually put out to bid, what this project is going to look like.
Another point to make, and to add to that, our team, Nathan, Kevin, the Mills Group, has been seeking out bidders for the last couple months, or, you know, inviting them to bid. That way we can get competitive bids and save the taxpayers money, because more people get bid, and in return, we're probably going to have a more competitive way to bid.
And the better we're able to have the documents procured and created and designed by the firm, the better attracted it is.
And I also did have some pretty good dialogue with our state legislative representatives, and this, I mean, again, this is something that is mandated on us, an unfunded mandate, and also, they are working, unsure of what could come, but they are working to try to get some funding to come in, because this was an unfunded mandate. So it's really an unfair, you know, that we have to take on the cost of this type of a reconfiguration when it's something that they're mandating on us. So they are looking for funding to throw at that project as well.
Yeah, but it's also a needed project, always a needed project, and it's really evident we have to do it. We have to get it done now, at this time, and I actually talked also with Delegate Street multiple times about trying to see if they could at least.
They try.
At least get a little bit of funding on this, because they are mandating it, so. All right, that being said, yes?
Yes.
Yes, and yes.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have anything, pushers, comments for, pushers, stand?
Uh, yes. Last week, I believe on Thursday, I attended an L E P C meeting, which is your local emergency planning commission. I sit on that board, and a lot of good stuff. That board consists of your law enforcement, fire analysts, your school system, Tixson, Camp Dulson. They have been trying for a long time, and have been actually trying to work on us a little bit, to get CSX in on that. That's important. With that train running through our county, it's important that we plan for emergencies that could be a result of the train traveling through here, hospital, health department, your senior citizens groups, and also your amateur radio club. And you think, why would you have to have an amateur radio person on that? But in the event of a complete catastrophe, those guys are pretty amazing. What they can, they can take this little wire and put it up over something and get out, and, you know, God forbid anything like that ever happen, but that is really, really important. But what excited me the most about this past meeting is hearing that they've got a planning meeting to do a tabletop, which they're working on, trying to do it at a time that our volunteer fire departments could participate, since they are volunteers. You know, they, most of them have other jobs that they have to be at. So to get this off the ground, they're going to start with a tabletop and eventually work into that full-scale training of a disaster of some sort, and there's a variety of disasters. They've done mass shootings for years and different things like that, but this would be, you know, I think they're leaning towards like some sort of like a chemical spill this time for, for that, and that would be very important for the fire department to be in on that one. But it was a very, very good meeting, as a board that I see a lot of, it's just, it's really beneficial, because you need to always plan for the worst, and that's about important. Also, on Thursday, I did attend the Fire Association meeting. We had sent correspondence from our office, asking the Fire Association to bring their people, the different companies in the county together, to discuss the funding that's coming in from the state to our fire departments. I believe we're at $124,000 is what, what we, they will have to work with. So they are working towards, have you heard from, from them?
Yeah, they have official decisions.
Well, they, they did come to an agreement, and what they are thinking is that instead of taking and giving each department a little bit of funding or splitting it up by call volume, they're actually came to an agreement to look at, starting to look at a fire training facility, putting the county-wide fire training facility, putting that funding towards that. So I thought that was a great compromise. With that funding, I know a lot of the agencies or companies in the county have wanted to see something like that for a while, and so that, you know, those tranches of money that's trickling in from the state could very well get that to be a reality for the Fire Association. So that's, that's where they're at, and I'm.
Well, once they have an official decision, give it to us, and I'm in agreeance that we follow the Fire Association's recommendation.
Well, they, they made a decision, they're just looking at a lot of the variables, put a plan together to move forward, so we'll leave that in their mind and hope to hear some good things coming down the pipe on that. Nate, lend to some meetings we have coming up. We have the West Virginia Association of Counties meeting coming up. It's the 4th through the 6th in Charleston. It's, it's an organization that we belong to that takes in all of your elected officials, so it's, it's great training, it's great networking. As Robbie was discussing this last meeting that we were at, you know, building connections with people that do have the ability to, you know, get things done at a much higher level than what we have, it's good to know those people and work along by those people. So I'm certainly hoping that they have something a little different on opioid and different things, but again, those regional-type meetings, statewide meetings, is where we learn a lot of things. Also, Preston County Day, worked really hard to get that moved to the same time as our conference, because that was a big chunk of change, not traveling to Charleston twice, but Preston County Day is a really great day at the legislature. A lot of organizations from Preston County travel down there and lobby for very important things to our county, things that, you know, it takes, it takes a lot to get everything to be full circle in a county government, and all the organizations around the county that have to work together. And so it's just a great networking, and it's a great day to go down and work with our state elected representatives, and that's open to anybody that wants to go, so anybody that wants to go to Preston County Day, leave, consider going. And then there was one other meeting. We sat in on a call, a conference call, meeting that was held in Mon County last week, and with that meeting, it was the, it had to do with a regional approach to opioid settlement funds, looking at a couple different avenues and what that money should look like. So it was a great meeting. They are getting ready to put a board together. It'll consist of, correct me if I'm wrong, 26 people, and that's a county and municipality representative from each, from each county, to have a say at the table as to that regional, you know, that regional approach, so that we can try to find some working solutions to what we had going on there. And the next meeting, I believe we're looking at Preston County hosting it, that they're, they're looking at going around to different areas within the region, the counties in our region to, to host that, and that's really all you're doing is hosting it in just different areas. It really doesn't require us to do anything as a commission, but it will be, it'll be good, it'll be good. Anytime you can bring heads to the table to discuss ideas, there's more ideas to get to the best decision. I think that's it.
Okay. And to expand on that first, it's the West Virginia First Foundation. So we have our county money, which is trickling in, which the county commission makes a decision on that, and then there's actually a, I don't want to call it a state fund, there's the West Virginia First Foundation, and they have a bigger portion of the money, and that is there to leverage for like grant funding. So say if, say we had a project we wanted to do, but we didn't have enough funding, or a nonprofit agency had a project, they could apply for grants, you know, out of that pot of money, and then the state kept 3% for administration. But anyway, this regional board, which the commission will have to pick one person in Preston County to serve on the board, they're leaving it up to the county commission, and then all the municipalities will come together and pick one person from the county to represent Preston County on the board, so you're have two. That's the regional board. All the regional board does is vet through, vet grant applications and recommend certain applications to the state. So that's my spill on that. Nate pretty much touched on everything else. I'm very excited for Preston County Day at the legislature, that's one of my favorites. Used to go when I was in high school. Other than that, the Preston County Extension Office still has an ag agent opening. We've been without the ag agents and still Shockey retired, so that's great news, and for more information, people can apply through WDU Extension or reach out to our extension office for more information, and that's all I have.
CDV, CDV's scoring more than town. So far this year, I mean, this past year, levels of revenue got back to what they were before COVID, the company, and actually are doing much better. They're actually 34% more than the last eight-year average, so it's actually a real good year as far as I guess. In fact, now Taylor County is part of, now their country, CDV, they, their revenue is one of the substantial things. Yeah, Taylor County, because they're part of it, and because they're getting more advertising now, so their stuff is going up drastically. And one of the things they were talking about, this is something we had talked about when we were down at the West, like the last week, these three things, a couple years ago, they had that Airbnb bill that passed, that when someone rented something to Airbnb or Vrbo or whatever, when there's online companies, the lodging tax would be paid to the county or the municipality, or what's going to happen. One of the things they're talking about is the possibility of, there's a bill, actually there's a bill number right now, I'll go as quick. It would add that onto campsites also, or RV sites or something like that around, so that'd be one more thing, possibility. But it has passed yet, it's down the legislature, we'll see how it goes. That is all I've got. So that being said, if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.
Are you from the Preston, it's adjourned? Yes.